Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board Finance Committee meeting. First, we will have courtesy of the floor. Anyone with courtesy of the floor? Or agenda items, anyone afterwards for non-agenda? All right. Thank you. No discussion items listed. No information items listed, so gets us to number four agenda items for the September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting. And Mr. Stokazian, if you would take us through those listed agenda items for the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Donar. If you don't mind, as one, this is more or less just be compliant with our own policies. Policy seven oh two requires donations to be approved by the board. So four point oh one, there's a donation in the amount of three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents from the class of nineteen fifty-five to Liberty High School. Donation number two is actually the reverse, where we're asking the board's approval for the district to donate obsolete, if you will, end-of-life projectors to a school in the Dominican Republic. Again, this is more or less a compliance item, so we comply with Board Policy seven oh two. Typically, you haven't seen these, but we will go and follow. Any questions on those? Okay. Moving right along, this is an agreement with Bucks Mountain Academy for Satellite Food Services. In essence, they're asking for the district to provide fifty breakfast and lunch meals, including milk per day at a cost of two dollars and fifty cents and four dollars per meal. Bucks Mountain Academy is going to provide all the equipment and staffing necessary to serve these meals. And we just have to prepare them and make them available for pickup.
So just as a comment, we will not be able to claim these meals. These meals will be claimed by Bucks Mountain, but we're being paid for them.
We're being paid for them, the two dollars, fifty cents, and four dollars. Bucks Mountain will be responsible for filing all the reimbursements with the states. And then they will, they will go through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Item four point oh four is annual elections of the P A School Board Association officers. You have ballots at your desk. If you don't mind completing them out, at the end of this meeting, I will collect them, and then when we have the month-end meeting, those results will be available for voting. I don't know if you want me to go through the candidates, but they're available.
I see a couple of qualified candidates on there. I'm not telling you who to vote for, though.
Next item on the agenda is the BERC one agreement. Essentially, they will agree to mail out the homestead applications on behalf of the V A S T at a cost of point three five three zero with no return envelope. If we were to select envelopes, option would be an additional four hundred and twenty-five dollars. This does not include postage, shipping, or any other cost other than the mailings. Estimated cost is two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Four point oh six is a new one as well. We've seen some districts take advantage of those portionary boards programs. This is in essence a rebate program, a loyalty program, if you will. You get an agreed upon discount on items like team apparel or uniforms based on a dollar spent, then we will get a rebate to be used for future credit on those topics. So we do get a discount on almost everything they sell, as long as we follow their processes. And based on the dollar spent, we will get a rebate of three, between three to eight percent. And this applies to all high schools and middle schools, so anything athletic, really. Moving right along. This is a renewal of our sort of data backup systems. It's an annual renewal. And estimated cost of sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. We've been with them for quite some time, and I, I T team is very satisfied. Four point oh eight is the Bay Out of Home Health Cares. There's two different contracts I'm here, but both are essentially the same. Sixty-five dollars per hour for nursing or L P N services. The first contract is a one-on-one that will be effective until February the third. The second one is throughout the year on a monthly basis. Four point oh nine is our affinity groups. We went out to bid on these, and there was actually three bids that we received. Two of them have been selected for services. The first one is going to be to BTG Consulting Group. The second one is Optimistic Expectations. And these are the two vendors that will be paid from Title One. Any question?
I didn't say it was exciting, but it was good business, regular business of what to do, especially when I read that data backup system for sixty-four thousand dollars. That's the best sixty-four thousand we're spending in a district. So thank you for that one, Harry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stokazian. Number five, courtesy of the floor to visitors for any comments. Anyone? Mr. Antalics, you're okay over there? Okay. And open forum, anything from board members? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn. Dr. White, and second by Mrs. Patrick. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Thanks for joining us September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for the Board Human Resources Committee meeting. Courtesy of the floor for any agenda, or any items on the agenda. There'll be a second one at the end of the meeting. Okay. All right. I'm on delay. We have some discussion items. Two point zero one, Board Policy six oh one, Fiscal Objectives, first reading.
Yes, Harry will go over all of the policies. They all deal with the business office.
Thank you. You'll notice a trend here. We're actually starting with six point oh one, and we're doing a refresh of our policies. In some cases, it's minor updates, i.e. the title. In other cases, we're just making sure we put in the timeline timelines for compliance. So for example, six point oh one. I don't know if you want me to go line by line on these, but six point oh one, we're putting in the state requirements. This is the A F R needs to be submitted by the end of October. It's not in our policy, but the state does give you an automatic thirty-day extension, so by November is really our deadline. And I think after that, we would have to opt in for an exception and request approval from the state. That was not in our policy previously, but it is now, so that the timeline is very clear. Six. I'm just going to keep going. If there's questions, please stop me. Six point ten, similar concept. We're just cleaning up the policy to make sure that we tie into the Pennsylvania code, put in all the appropriate dollar limits, and actually simplify someone purchasing requirements that are on there. And again, we're using the P S B A policies as a guide on that one. Six two six, we've had in place, there's some minor edits and codifications in there. The bigger reason why we're putting that on there is because the next four items you see on there, oh four, oh five, oh six, oh seven, are all attachments that should be included as part of the policy. They were not previously included for one reason or the other, so now we're attaching them on there as guidelines. One thing we put into the six twenty-six policy is that while the attachments are part of the policy, when you approve the policy, if you approve the policy, the superintendent will have the ability to make the changes to all the attachments because they're more or less procedural items, but we want to make sure that you see it before it gets into the policy. Skipping right down to two point oh eight, which is the procurement federal guidelines. Again, this is kind of part of that six-ten. It was previously commingled. Now that we're spelling out all the requirements for federal procurement guidelines, that includes minority vendors, that includes different bidding requirements, sealed bids, what have you. All that is now being spelled out in here, so that it's quantified in terms of what our practice is. Six two, six two, six point one is a new policy. This is more or less related to travel that happens on federal dollars or federal funding. It pretty much mirrors what we do in our regular policy, but this is a requirement from the P S B A, and so we have one on there. And that's our policy updates in our nutshell.
Thank you. Any questions, Dr. Beck? Coolly? Just, just had a question because it looked like in six twenty-six, one of the main revisions is for the, not the attachments, but the, the primary policy was to, to switch it just to make it more flexible, instead of it always being up to a federal programs coordinator. It was just up to the district, which I think makes a lot of sense. One of the attachments, though, refers to the federal programs and grants coordinator, and so I didn't know if we were trying to make it more flexible. If there's anything to do about that title and the attachments, like you did with the policy, or I might have misunderstood, but just as I was reading through, I was, that was a, that title didn't get crossed out of the attachment that it had of the policy.
I'll go back and double-check, make sure we're consistent, but they intend us to make sure that the federal programs coordinator also has a say in all of these.
Absolutely. Yeah, this wasn't, I just noticed that, that the official policy just made it more flexible, like the district was going to make sure of stuff, and the district was going to, and so just in case you wanted that flexibility to carry over to the attachment, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Alosi?
Regarding item two point oh two, purchase subject to bid. Under that policy, I just want to understand the language that is stricken and is suggesting to be replaced regarding the price point. So I guess in the, along the second page has to do with the fact that we would be looking to the Consumer Price Index or Cost Index for things, so we don't have to have stipulated five thousand eighteen, okay? And then, so therefore, at the end, all of the language at the bottom is stricken because it relates to that other language. Thank you. Everybody else shook their head, so I assumed the death.
Any other questions on these?
A recent experience with the federal S R program and some of the regulations that they have made it clear to us that some of the policies that we had were a little dated, needed updating. So you'll see on a lot of those, federal programs, procurement federal programs. It's a, if we, it'll be particularly helpful if in the future there are more federal programs or competitive grants that have a federal nature to them. So I want to thank Harry for his hard work. This is a lot of policy work that we're updating and getting, getting current. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no. Did we touch on two point one zero Health and Safety Plan? Okay.
Yes, Todd Rapture is our expert on that, and he is here to answer any questions.
You know that new rule with the third emergency quarterback? You got it. Larry Hogan's in Africa, and Kim's not, Dr. Brandon's not able to be here. So if you do have any questions about this, Dr. Brandon and I went over the Health and Safety Plan. There really aren't many updates. Some new names added, change. Going forward this year is we're not, we're treating COVID like any other illness, so we're not tracking it amongst students or staff. Health and Safety Plan over the last few years was a requirement under accepting the S R's funds, so there's still some of that in the pipeline, so we still have that submittal of it. So what Todd's describing is the updating of it for this year.
Dr. White? Just a question of foreshadowing, since we're also looking at the news of a potential three-way disaster with R S V and, and flu symptoms and the COVID. Is there embedded in this a redirect if, for some reason, just numbers start to tank?
Every, every, in the one section in there, it talks about that we will follow the C D C and the City of Bethlehem Health Department guidelines as they come forward. So whatever changes would, would be updated or required through that, we would be in line with that.
The reason why I'm bringing that up, I didn't, I did read that. And, and you don't have to provide an answer. It's just a thought. When reporting numbers were happening, and even after it was required that people would report where they were testing positive, et cetera, the school district maintained those records, which really helped Bethlehem move forward in their, their response plans, et cetera. And I would just like to reaffirm that when we communicate people getting sick, people having these, these contagious issues, it's good for us to have a repository of these kind of numbers that have a good representation of our community for the services of being able to advise our health directors in the reverse direction. That's all I'm saying. That was a really helpful thing. And I, I don't want to say that we bear the responsibility to doing that, but we were pretty good at it. So I don't know if the, if the committee is looking at, you know, when should we start tracking this? We're seeing a lot of absenteeism. You know, we don't know exactly why people are sick, et cetera. That's all I'm just asking, because this isn't the same kind of pow hit that happened in March of two thousand and twenty.
We'll obviously follow the direction of the Bethlehem Health Bureau and St. Luke's Hospital.
Only until they ask.
But the Health and Safety Plan does allow us to follow their guidelines.
But the Health and Safety Plan does allow us to follow their guidance.
Any other, Mr. Lucy?
Just an understanding of procedure. If this does need to be amended at some point, would that be something that would need to come back to the board for approval? Or is that something that we've already approved that thus the office can do whatever? Thank you.
Okay, just one quick question, just to clarify, because I know the city of Philadelphia, their school district. Has already set a precedent, you know, if, if you test positive, you're out for five days. And then they recommend masking for five days. We are not making any kind of blanket statement with regard to COVID. No. Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, thank you so much. Did a great job. Okay, now up for my favorite section, information items.
Yes, I believe there's an update. All right. If we could go to the next slide, please. Just some quick staffing facts. Since February of two thousand twenty-three, there have been twenty-six professional staff members that have retired. During the orientation day in August, there were one hundred and eleven participants. That included individuals that were hired last year that, or they came to us from other districts that are already went through an induction program. Or they're long-term substitutes that are not here for the entire, entire year, but they do come for the one-day orientation. To become familiar with the Bethlehem area school district. We do have forty-six staff members who are participating in our new teacher induction program that will go throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our current vacancies, we have ten professional staff member vacancies. We have a number of support staff vacancies in instructional assistance. There are eight across the district. The general duty aides, we have two custodial positions, we have four vacancies, and we have one maintenance position currently vacant. We have two administrative positions. We have the Governor Wolf Principal as well as the Supervisor of Child Accounting. And if all goes well later this week, there may be names on next week's board agenda for your approval. Emergency certifications, the district currently has. Four individuals who are on an oh four emergency certificate, which means they do not have any educational obligations. They're here for the first semester. We have. Seven individuals who are on an oh one emergency certification. That means they have educational obligations. Where they are enrolled in programs and in order to maintain that certificate and continue to teach in future years. They have to meet certain credit requirements throughout the upcoming year. And the university has to submit to us. Documentation that the individual is maintaining their enrollment in the programs. The district also has two individuals that are on what's called an intern certificate. Intern certificates are special certificates through a university and not all universities have intern certificates or the same intern certificates. It's an alternate route to becoming certified as a professional staff member. And we, the Bethlehem area school district has entered into a partnership with two different universities for two individuals. And if we could go to the next slide. The next slide is just a breakdown of the elementary staffing numbers. Home room numbers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. You'll see that overall in all of the. Elementary schools, we have two hundred and seventy-five staff members. That only includes homeroom teachers. That does not include psychologists, school nurses, guy, school counselors. And the last slide, please. And this is a slide representing all of the professional staff members at the Bethlehem area school district. You'll notice the, we have two different columns. The general operating budget is where most of the staff. Compensation comes from, but we also have a number eighty-four point eight positions that are paid through, through grant. And then this year, there was an increase of eight point six eight staff members from last year. With the elementary class size numbers, we did pull the numbers as of the middle of last week. It was after the ten-day drop period. I'm currently looking at that as well as all of the elementary principals have been asked to email me any. Unique situations they may have in their building and then we'll be reviewing that information to see if any additional staff may be needed. Thank you. That's all I have the report under special updates.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Mr. Fasnado?
I'm going to say yes, but I will double check them. I will double check and make sure that a member wasn't missed.
It may be, if you remember, there was that, those two years there where there weren't a whole lot of students entering kindergarten, they were holding back. And now it seems like they have been matriculated in the first and second grade. So there may be a, a dearth in kindergarten.
Mr. Lucy?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
That's the thing, the hand. So first and foremost, when you go back to talking about the folks that we brought in and. Talking about the induction program that we have. Mr. Burris, you might be the person to answer this, or Dr. Silver, Dr. Lee, and you as well. When we look at those who are participating in our induction program, if I remember correctly, correctly. Some leaders of that are our own staff members, highly qualified, highly lauded teachers, administrators, things of that nature. How are we evaluating if we are evaluating the effectiveness of those induction leaders?
Well, we have our induction leader right here present today. Mr. James is in the back. He can get into it, he can get into a little bit more detail. I'll let Mrs. Lee, Dr. Lee, and take the first shot at that one.
So there are three levels of induction support. So the first is every new teacher attends district-wide induction meetings and those are facilitated by Mr. James. They occur on a monthly basis in addition to a couple of extra days at the beginning of the school year. The second level of induction is there's building-wide induction on a monthly basis, which is a building-run meeting. So typically, one or a few administrators meet with any of the inductees. On a monthly basis and typically Mr. James guides the buildings. So there's some consistency about some of the monthly topics that really should be discussed. For instance, you know, this, in, in the September month, we would talk about open house. If this is your first open house that you're facilitating and parents are coming in, what are some of the things you might be expecting? As we get, you know, towards November, we'll be talking about the first time we submit report cards. And what are some of those critical factors as a new teacher? At building wide induction. And then the third layer, I think, is what you're referring to, Mr. Allozy, is every. Inductee receives a mentor. That mentor is selected by, in consultation with Mr. James and the building principal. So it's not just a, hey, who wants to be a mentor? It's a very purposeful selection. At the high school level, we're going to make sure that a mentor is coming from someone within that department. So a special education inductee will have a special education mentor to talk about some of the nuances of your first IEP meeting, et cetera. But that is done in consultation with the building principal and Mr. James and making sure that we have, we did a nice matchmaking. For mentors. So I just wanted to note that there were multiple layers of the induction process and how teachers are being supported and facilitated. I would also add that Mr. James has a lot of activities embedded to support teachers in that first year. One of which being, he will encourage teachers to kind of get out and visit their peers and do some peer learning walks. Because what I know as an educator is I learn a lot when I'm visiting other educators. And I am picking up on some of those little nuances and strategies that sometimes when we live in our own silo in our own classroom, we don't necessarily pick up on. And so there are a variety of activities that Mr. James has embedded throughout the school year, then he debriefs on.
And there are accountability measures for the mentors. There's a responsibility as they meet a certain amount of time every month. Is it once? Once a month, Mr. James? Correct. So the principal monitors the success of the mentors meeting their requirements. And if for some reason a mentor doesn't live up to them, that we don't invite them to be a mentor again. But we're lucky that we do have a, a good tried and true group that really embraces mentoring, is good at mentoring and are good role models. But there are built-in accountability measures that make sure that mentors check all the boxes and the requirements to the mentor position.
Thank you for that. Thank you all for all of that. All right. So then the next question I have in relation to your presentation, going back to the retirees at the end of the year. Have we conducted any exit interviews or feedback? Is that part of how we do things here in terms of when people retire?
I know that Mr. Giordano had talked to a few people that had either resigned or retired, but that is a practice that I will pick up on next spring.
Right. All right. Notes in random places, I have to see where they are. Um, so in. In looking at who we're hiring and, and maintaining folks, the retention of our, of our staff across the board. What are we doing to ensure that culture and climate? Is positively retaining our teachers specifically, our teachers of color in our district?
I can't speak to what has been done in the past, but we are looking at, you know, how we can shorten the window. And as Dr. Silva mentioned last, or last week, you know, our goal for next year would be to increase. The, the numbers of staff members who are of color. So we're looking at ways to do that, whether it's expanding our reach and of our recruitment efforts.
There, there are existing practices whenever. Whenever a professional position is being forwarded after the interviews at the school level. That folder is required to list the number of people who were interviewed, their interview notes. Whether the, how many of those who were interviewed were candidates of color. So there is in the mechanical nature of it. Is there a need for us to up the recruitment, the selection, retain? Definitely. But there are systems within our hiring and in our selection process that make sure that we monitor, are we including candidates of color in the pool?
So, yes, and I, I, I know that part and Mr. Burris, Dr. Burris, Dr. Burris. It may be as you grow, as you go through your position here. I'm sure you'll be able to provide more. My, my question, not concern, well, no, there's a concern, I'm not gonna lie. My question more so is when we look at retention, and I'm asking this pointed question because. Over the years, I'll just speak to the last decade, we've lost several educators of color in different ranks of the district. And so as we do that, or as we, as we grow, I'm glad to know that we're recruiting, that we're looking, we're asking the questions, we're, we're pooling the people. But our culture and climate here in the district, you know, are we evaluating that? Are we hearing back from people? Are we looking at things? Are we asking from folks who may have different vantage points than us to see, hey, what are you noticing that we're not noticing? I mean, I think it's telling when I hear from people who've left our district and are like seventeen states away. They're like, this happened to me and I said something and nothing happened. Things like that. We don't have, I'm not saying that happens to everybody all the time, but in those situations where something like happen, or it's just simple of, you know. I, you know, I call the kids by their nicknames and my peers, you know, are aghast at that and they don't like that. Well. I come from a culture where, you know, if your name is Tito at home, I'm gonna call you Tito here, you know, things of that nature. So however that works. If we're looking into that, I'm curious to know what that is. And if that's something that we're not looking into, just to be mindful to look into that. And I'm taking up a lot of airtime, so I'm done.
Thank you for those questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So next up, we have agenda items for September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. The regular board meeting, four point zero one, the Health, Health and Safety Plan, which we already reviewed. Any questions or objections that going on the agenda? Okay, and then four point zero two, the amendment to the Healthcare Services MOU.
That's generally the hiring of the St. Luke's physician, who is our district physician of record. Something that gives us a lot of comfort knowing that we have, have a dedicated doctor, but also the resources of St. Luke's behind them.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, seeing none. Courtesy of the floor for any topic. Mr. Antalis? All right. I'm not sure whether to say thank you or not. Anyone else? Oh, God, just said, okay. Absolutely. This is your opportunity now. Yep. And if you can, just give us your name and address.
Sure. My name is Raya Levy. I'm at sixteen oh nine Stanford Road. And. So. So I was looking at the report card for Pennsylvania. It came out in the morning call. Did everyone, I don't know if everyone saw that. I, um, excuse me? Oh, sorry. Hello, testing. Can you hear me now? Okay, so, um, I wanted to bring this up on my computer so it's visible, but. It's a report card for Pennsylvania and. I was looking at, I'm more partial to Liberty High School because my son goes there. And I looked at Liberty, I also looked at Freedom. And they ranked four hundred and something in Pennsylvania and ten thousand in the district as far as the report card is concerned. But what I want to bring to your attention actually is Masterson. And I am sorry, I, I keep forgetting your last name. What's your last name again, Mr.? Mister, Mister Antalis. So yes, so. I was looking at Masterson's report card and they rank, I believe, number one. In Pennsylvania and number two overall. And, and so. What Mr. Antalis said last week about, you know, actually putting the money into a certain area. But with Masterson, the majority of the people at that school are economically, are not in an economical position. But yet their ranking is high. And so, you know, I, you know, I was just wondering, you know. What is it exactly that they are doing even though? And the minority, you know, as far as my, and I hate that word minority, I would use the word non-white. And so it's fifty-six percent non-white at that particular school. But as far as economics is concerned, white, black, pink, green, they're all economically deprived. A hundred percent guys, a hundred percent. And so it's not even like that here in this, this district. So I'm wondering, you know. What is it exactly that they're doing that they're so successful even though? And, and again, you know, there, there are issues as well. They have issues. It's not to say that they don't have issues. They also struggle with recruitment of minority teachers and so forth. And also they just started to allow other kids as far as. Kids who may be, because at one point they just used to allow kids that are really smart into Masterson. But now they have changed that and I wish I had the report up and everything so I could be more specific. But, um, you know, I was just thrown back by the fact that, you know, that's the case at Masterson. When it comes to their grade level and so forth. So if you haven't seen that report. So if you haven't seen that report, take a look at the report and perhaps, and also there's, there's also reports where they went through, you know, certain, certain issues and so forth. So I'm not saying that they're perfect, but they're doing something that's making them successful and making them rank number one and number two.
Thank you. Mr. Antalis.
Stephen Antalis, seven hundred seven Ridge. Some time ago, a local paper published on my op-eds concerning funding for schools. And superintendent and president Fast House sent it around to all the districts and apparently it got some attention. But the point I want to follow up is that s- some schools cannot afford, or rather, if they need teachers and the shortage of accredited teachers becomes a function of what the school can pay. And based upon the op-ed the real estate average cost plus the average salary determines the quality of education. Not, not the ability of the child. So it's a lose-lose situation for the poor districts because they cannot afford to pay for accredited teachers because communities with high income and school taxes offer salaries that the others can't afford to pay. So they're, they're losers twice. So how to solve it, I don't know, because it's going to require some major changes. I'd recommend it to the state take over the school system. And which is pretty radical, but it, it'd probably be better once exists now. Take for example, Rattan Township. Not only do they have a high level of credited teachers, they also have a high level of PhDs teaching at, at the, that level. Because the average income is almost ten times that of Chester County. So it's a lose-lose situation for those people. So I don't know the solution. I don't know if any of you know the solution, but I think something needs to be done. Also, I noticed on one of the slides, a pre-K a number. What was that number indicate? Is it, how many children attend those pre-K classes?
I do not know the number of students, but I can find that out for you.
Question that becomes, what is the ratio of all the children available for pre-K of that number and the number that attends? What is that ratio and why the discrepancy? As I mentioned last meeting, it's obvious the value of pre-K. So that scholastic activities are not mandated by the Department of Education. So how much money is there that might go into pre-K? But I was told by a board member at that time that that's danger, a dangerous slope because you cut out these extra curriculum activities, you will lose attendance to charter schools. So it's, it's a tricky situation, but I, I think well, enough said on pre-K. Thank you.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Okay, moving on to open forum.
Only item I have executive session will be contract negotiation, litigation, student discipline. I think that covers it. And yeah, we'll go upstairs immediately after for that.
Anyone else for open forum? Hold on, Mr. Lozey?
This is an open question and for this committee. But I wanted to, maybe it could be discussion or not, but an open question I have related, somewhat related to Dr. Burris's presentation. I'm curious to know what are our hiring practices for some of our entry-level positions in the district regarding people who have broken the law for like misdemeanors or things that, you know, that were done ten years ago that today like aren't a thing anymore or aren't a problem. As we look to, to build, you know, Bethlehem and, and, and hire our community and bring in our community, because that's what makes a strong school, right? Having the community and the school be tight-knit. You know, somebody who made a mistake of selling their grandma, we back in two thousand and three, you know, now realizes that, you know, they would make an excellent what was one of the custodian or teacher or whatever, you know, whatever the case may be. Have we given any thought to that? Is that something that we're looking to do?
Things around banning the box. No longer testing for marijuana as a, as a controlled substance, except for like bus drivers and nurses and stuff like that. But the general liberalization of understanding that still, that employees can and did make mistakes, but also that are, those mistakes no longer are relevant to their ability to and meet the employment function of the job that we have. So I know that that was a, a concern for myself and Dr. Roy as we were moving forward and making sure that our recruiting and our selection and our criteria were keeping current with the times.
If I could add, I, I want to share an instance with you with a teacher that I hired a couple of years ago. So everyone's required to have a criminal history background check done at the time of hiring. That's just a standard protocol. And I, I just want you to know that in this particular instance, something did come up on the criminal history background check. But when we talked to him, it was so de minimis. It was something that he did when he was a teenager and he was now in his, I, I'm gonna say maybe in his fifties. I don't know exactly his age. But my point is that even in the hiring of teachers, we try to contextualize, what, what is this about? Why did, you know, so again, it was, it was so minim, so minimal. And at the time it happened, now it wouldn't even appear like on someone, no one would get in trouble for it. It wouldn't pop up.
Each, each time one of the clearances come, comes back with an indicated issue, we look at that on an individual basis. And there are only a very few things that are life banning in the field of education. Whenever we were dealing with that, our, our philosophy was always tie goes to the runner. That the, a person making the initiative to apply, recognizing as long as we had that conversation about it, that doesn't get in the way of them being hired.
Anyone else? Okay, then can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Rashudi, second, this is Schenckel. Thank you. Ballots to Harry, please.